All right, we'll call the town meeting to order November 3rd. We'll have a moment of silent meditation, please. Can we have a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the good love for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, James, let's take a roll call.
Yes, sir. And as we're starting, Mayor Owens, of course, has just asked for a roll call, so is present, Mayor Protem Selby. Commissioner Walker, and it looks like Commissioner Walker is absent. Commissioner Collins.
Mr. President.
Commissioner Borland.
Here.
Commissioner Mann.
Here.
And Commissioner Burke.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
All right, thank you, James. Can we have a motion for adoption of the agenda, please?
I move to adopt the agenda for whom?
Second.
Second.
Move and second, the agenda be adopted. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. All right, we have now the consent agenda, the motion for consent agenda, we have to have it.
I'd like to make a change in the consent agenda for the ragging meeting on October 6th on the motion that was made by Richie Burke to name December 6th Linda Medesay. I think I made the motion.
You did.
You did.
Okay. So I'll do that change if you can.
Can't we just make a correction? Correction to the minutes?
A motion to approve.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second to approve the consent agenda. We'll move on. Okay, James?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next up on the agenda, these items are for information purposes. They are presentations and reports. First up, we have Mr. Austin Banks. Mr. Banks is a certified public accountant as well as a certified fraud examiner, and he's with the firm of Thompson, Price, Scott, Adams &amp; Company out of Wilmington, North Carolina. He's going to do a presentation on the audit for the town of Manio for the fiscal year 2020 to 2021. Mr. Banks?
Uh, Mr. Banks, Mr. Banks, for the sake of clarity, and we want to hear you real good, you can go ahead and take your mask off if you'd like. There you go. Thank you. So you should have in front of you the audit presentation as well as the financial statements. I'll use both of these in conjunction with each other, mainly using the audit presentation, and I will reference what pages in the financial statements to for better clarification. So like I said, my name is Austin Yubanks, I'm a certified public accountant and a certified fraud examiner. I do work with Thompson, Price, Scott, Adams out of Wilmington. This is my first year working on this particular entity, so I would like to go a little bit deep dive into everything that we've accomplished. So I am required to, for certain communications. So our responsibilities were under the generally accepted auditing standards, government auditing standards, and OMB Uniform Guidance and State Single Audit Act. We had to design the audit to provide reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free of material error and in compliance with government regulations, and this was accomplished this year. There was no material errors and no insufficiencies that was noted. We had to perform all planned procedures and have completed, complete access to both management and all required information, and this is also completed this year. Everything we asked for, we asked well ahead of time, and Ms. Shannon did provide everything weeks in advance. There was no significant deficiencies in internal control this year, and I think in prior years there was a segregation issue. Just too far. All right. So like I said, in prior years there was a segregation of duties issue mainly over the cash and due to a staffing issue. So going on to other required communications, there was no change in accounting policies. There was no material adjustments that we made on our end. Actually, in fact, there was only six auditors adjusting entries, and for a town this size, that is significantly less than we normally do. All our financial statements disclosed are neutral, consistent, and clear. There was nothing in the notes that pertained to any significant defaults in the presentation or the audit. There was no disagreements with management. Management did provide a representation letter saying that they did agree with everything that's provided on the financial statements. We'll go on to the next slide. All right, there was no difficulties in performing the audit this year, no regularities or illegal acts that we detected, and no findings again. So going to the next slide, this is a breakdown of the general fund. As you can tell, the total revenues and transfers in totaled 5.8 million, total expenditures and transfers out was 4.6 million. So the general fund in all had a net change of $1.1 million, which is a significant amount. One of the things that we'd like to highlight is the unassigned fund balance. The town has $4.7 million of fund balance that is free to do at a town discretion. Percentage of fund balance available over the general fund expenditures, this is basically a simple ratio that shows if the town stops basically collecting any money and at the time, could they still pay their operating expenditures, and they have enough in their unassigned fund balance to pay a year's worth of expenditures. And the state average, obviously, in this report is 82%, which is significantly higher. And the total collection rate overall for the town was 98.73%, 100% of that being motor vehicles. So next, this is basic graphs, just showing three-year comparison. From what I've been seeing, we do seven counties and around 30 to 40 towns. Revenues overall has been increased this year, especially occupancy tax, as you see going on. Property tax revenues increased 165,000 over last year, sales tax increased another 183,000, but the occupancy tax, which was kind of a shocker to me, increased over last year by $320,000. And obviously, we're going to have a little bit more expenditures when having this type of revenues increases. So the general fund breakdown of operating expenditures, unrestricted intergovernmental is 44%, and you can see a better breakdown of these on the financial statements on page 41, if anybody wants to follow along. General fund revenues, like I said, unrestricted intergovernmental is 44%, that mainly is the sales and use tax. The add-on taxes are 41%, other revenues of 8%, and restricted intergovernmental of 7%. The restricted undergovernmental is more grants and power bill revenue from the state. General fund operating expenditures, and this is a nice breakdown to show exactly where the money is being spent. Public safety seems to be a little bit lower than I see overall from other entities. The general government's 54%, that makes up $2.5 million. And there's a breakdown, again, on page 42 of the financial statements, if you want to follow along. Public safety is 1.2 million, transportation and environmental protection making 19%, equals to 887,000, and other expenditures is 97,000. And there's a good breakdown of the analysis of fund balance. So like I said, the unassigned fund balance for 2021 was $4.7 million, and the unrestricted, I mean, the restricted amount was 2.5 million. And you'll see over year to year, the 2.5 is a significant increase over the 2020 of restricted, and the breakdown of that is state stabilization, which is a mandate by the state, of 837,000. Power bill cash on hand was 93,000. There's drug enforcement cash was 11,000, and what makes up the bulk of it is the subsequent year expenditures of 1.597 million dollars. And that's mainly for projects going into this year. And that can be found on page 11 of the financial statements as well. So this graph can be a little deceiving. You'll see the unassigned fund balance obviously going down, down to 102%, but what makes up that decline is the subsequent year expenditures that we did restrict, and that's for a lot of capital outlay that has been set aside for purchasing in 2021, '22 year. So if that hadn't been restricted, that number would have, I think, been around 150% instead of 102%. So that's going to be obviously, I think, a capital outlay of a new truck being purchased and the park as well, the, I'm sorry, the commons, commons, yeah. This phase two of commons is what's been set aside. All right, going to the water and sewer fund. Total revenues and transfers in is 1.9 million, over the total expenditures is 1.979. So without the grants, the town would have made about a property of around 4,000, but since it did have some contributed capital, which is grants of 112,000, that made up the bulk of the net change in fund balance for the year. And the fund balance at the year, for the entire year, is 7.162 million, and that's obviously the assets or liabilities. And a breakdown of the analysis, cash, the water and sewer fund, there's $3 million of cash of unrestricted, and the restricted amount of 194,000. All the non-major funds is 485,000, and general fund cash, cash equivalents of 6.493,000 is restricted, and that's mainly the power bill money for transportation to streets for the town. I just wanted to say thank you to the town for the opportunity to perform the audit. Thank you to Shannon for providing us all the material that we did request at a time of matter.
Mr. Banks, while you're standing, let me open it up to the board a little while, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
If they have any questions of you. Any board members have any questions?
No, thank you. This is, you know, it might be boring to watch, but it's, it's clear and it's good, and that graph going down, you know, I mean, it's, there's no need to be at 130% and, you know, I mean, that's, that's how all this cool stuff that's happening around town gets done, and to have all the momentum we've got and still be over 100%, we're in good shape, it looks like.
Yeah, and I will say the, the state only requires around three to four months, and we're at 12 months in that regard, and, and you're continuing to grow the town. So being in the situation you are, I think, that absolutely shows that you are being good stewards for the town and town's money.
I would like to take this time to thank James and Shannon and the staff for managing this budget so frugal as it is, because as Jason just alluded to, this enables us to do projects that a lot of little towns cannot do, Mr. Banks, and you will have to attest to that, but I know you will. It sounds to me like, looks to me like, Mania's in good financial shape, and we don't want to ruin it, go crazy, but we've got some nice projects in mind, and they will benefit the whole of the purpose in Mania. But thank you so much. Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Banks.
All right, thank y'all.
Mr. Mayor, if it's all right, next up on the agenda?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Item number 5B, this is an update on the speeding plan. As the board may recall, at its last, at last session a couple of weeks ago, there was a discussion on, on speeding and having a plan to combat this particular issue, and tonight we have Lieutenant Isler from the Manio Police Department to provide an update on what's been going on in those, on those last two weeks.
Take my mask off so I can see. Mr. Mayor, Board of Commissioners, Mr. Town Manager, Lieutenant Brad Isler with the Police Department, and I'm going to present to you today the traffic plan initiative. This traffic plan initiative came to me around October the 20th. We've done a prior plan for Sir Walter Raleigh, that was over a period of time where we had some speeding complaints over there. We addressed that, we've done the same thing with this traffic plan initiative. We received the complaint about some speeding taking place in the hotspots throughout town, there's several. We'll go over those in just a few minutes. But again, we started to address this within a 24-hour period. We've already deployed the radar trailer, which collects statistical data, which helps us to enforce the speed laws at peak times of speeding, of speeding times, so we're still collecting data for that. We're going to use that radar trailer to collect data throughout town on targeted streets, and then we'll move forward with that. So we'll talk about each bullet point as we go along here. You can go ahead and start, but there we go. We just talked about the radar trail deployment, the plan on streets identified by citizens as having speeding problems. We talked about the previous issue with Sir Walter Raleigh, which is still a targeted problem. It's Sir Walter Raleigh, Fernando Street, Bowser Town, Ananias Dare, both Ananias Dare to Ananias Dare Extended, Upper Walk, Devon Street, and there's some, 64 obviously within the school zone during school zone times, and then also the stretch of 64 between Pirates Cove and Midway intersection. We have some issues there as well. So we'll address each one of those, and what we'll do to, to, to address the speeding problem is we'll collect speed statistics to identify problem areas of increased speed violations. So deployment will take place in any location or in all locations where deployment of speed signs and radar trailers are safe and effective. There are some locations and some streets where we simply can't deploy the radar trailer, it's not safe enough to do so. There's not enough room on the street, so we're going to work in collaboration with Deer County Sheriff's Office and maybe NAGCET Police Department. We have some smaller trailers and some smaller posted speed signs where we can use to collect data as well. That's agencies throughout Deer County that we can use, Southern Shores, Kitty Hawk, some of these, anything that we can get access to to try to collect data in multiple locations at the same time. We have increased speed patrols or increased patrols and enforcement of traffic violations in identified problem areas. Again, our specific radar trailer will tell us specific times and locations of speed enforcement. We can deploy officers to enforce speed limits during those particular times, not just speed limits, but traffic enforcement altogether, traffic violations. Increased patrols, we just talked about that, so we need to document, documentation of speed enforcement by MPD. There's a couple of different ways that we do that. The first is by self-initiated call for service. That goes through our CAD system, which that's a call for service through Deer County, which they collect that data, which we have access to. The officers can add notes into that data system to say that they've spent a particular time in a particular area and what their enforcement actions were for that particular timeframe. That will include whether it's no violations or there are observed violations, and those will be documented by the officers there. We'll go to the next slide. All right, we'll collaborate with surrounding jurisdictions for use of speed gathering equipment and enforcement of speed limits. That includes speed signs that other jurisdictions have in their possession, they're expensive, which is why I'll say we'll collaborate with, with other agencies. Those items can be extremely expensive to, just for one agency to have, so we are involved with a mutual aid agreement with that, with the other jurisdictions, so we can actually use some of their equipment to assist us in addressing these problems. And then we'll have saturation patrols, and to go into a brief description of saturation patrols, they can be as small as two officers, they can be as large as 20 or 30 officers, all depending on what kind of initiative you want to take place. So what happens with these, I'll give you a couple of examples. Within town, if we want to do saturation patrol and we had two officers working a shift, we could have those two officers concentrate on a certain area where they would concentrate on, at a certain timeframe, they would document those particular enforcement actions, and then we would turn those into Governor's Highway Safety. I'll go into that in just a minute as well. Also, you have townwide or countywide saturation patrols, where multiple agencies with mutual aid agreements get together to saturate a particular area that's having problems. So we could go into a mutual aid agreement with Deer County Sheriff's Office, NAGCET Police Department, to focus on US 64, the Baum Bridge, all the way to the Virginia Dare Bridge. There'd be a mutual aid agreement between the agencies where we could enforce speed limits on the Virginia Dare Bridge, they can enforce speed limits within the town limits, and then we concentrate on a certain area and collect that particular data, and again, turn that into Governor's Highway Safety Program for accurate collection. This particular picture at the bottom, that is a saturation patrol that we participated in on Harris Island. It was during the summer months last year of, it was actually July of 2020. We went down with the National Park Service, NAGCET Police Department, Highway Patrol. There's several other agencies that aren't pictured in this picture, Kitty Hawk, Kettlebush Hills, that were down there, obviously, and the tri-villages enforcing the speed zone violations there, because there's multiple violations. We end up writing, I believe it was well over 100 citations in just a few hours. In the tri-villages, it's, it's common, it's common for speeding complaints. All right, so we'll go to the, the next bullet point there. I'm sorry, we didn't go back, I was just going on the long-term collaboration. So long-term collaboration with surrounding jurisdictions to address speeding problems in all the problem areas, this is not something that we can handle in a, in a short timeframe. In order to collect data, to analyze the data, is sometimes when you start enforcement in one particular location, it moves to another. So a perfect example was the enforcement on Sir Walter Raleigh. Well, we did so much enforcement on Sir Walter Raleigh, we increased violations on Fernando. So they were just bypassing where we were doing the enforcement, and we ended up moving over there, got several enforcement actions on Fernando as well. So we have to make sure that we collect this data over time, then enforce the particular areas, you can't just focus on one area, you gotta keep moving back and forth. All right, the next bullet point there, participation in state-sponsored Governor's Highway Safety Program initiatives. They have initiatives such as No Need to Speed, which is focusing on speed limits. They have Booze It and Lose It, which is focusing on drinking and driving, and then we have Click It or Ticket, which focuses on seatbelt use. These happen throughout a calendar year, where the state has particular initiatives during holidays, during particular incidents of increased crash activity, and then they do Click It or Ticket during enforcement to increase the use of seatbelts within, throughout the state. So with these particular initiatives, we're involved in these initiatives, it's, the statistics are collected statewide, and then we enter these into the Governor's Highway Safety Program, where they collect the statistics of the amount of tickets written and what the tickets are written for. That way they have a statistical basis statewide and region-wide of what's going on and what's, what kind of citations are being issued throughout the state. They adjust these throughout the calendar years to focus mainly the Booze It and Lose It is always 4th of July, it's always Halloween, it's always Thanksgiving, and it's always Christmas. It's where you're going to have increased gatherings where drinking is going to be involved. We can move on to the next slide. Use of social media for special announcements and state-sponsored holiday traffic enforcement initiatives. What we want to do is use the town and police social media websites to announce certain initiatives that would be going on, so that's Booze It and Lose It, Click It or Ticket, No Need to Speed, and then especially during school traffic. When school starts in, you want to remind the citizens that school zones are going to be strictly enforced, what the, what the traffic laws are for passing of a school bus, in particular, especially on 64, a lot of people get confused that if you have an unprotected median, that if a school bus stops on one side, you don't have to stop on the other. We differ from other states where it's a requirement in Virginia where you don't stop, but here, or, I'm sorry, it's Virginia that you do stop, here is that you don't stop on a divided median like 64. On other divided medians, it's, you can continue to go through. But we want to use these social media websites to educate the public, the town citizens of the particular areas that they're, that they're going to travel in, and what the traffic laws are within those particular areas. Next bullet point, we want to have proactive community engagement involving the Community Police Advisory Board and personal interactions with citizens. The Police Advisory Board has been very beneficial to us when they started doing the activities down at the Washington Creek Park, and they had a lot of citizens come up to them, and they express concerns about speeding complaints, traffic law violations, and then the Board then reports those back to the Police Department in the meetings that we have on certain areas that we, that we may need to focus on. So we do that also. We're very community policing oriented. We like to get out and talk to the public, and we collect that data from them as well in a personal interaction. If they address it with us, we try to do just like we do with anything else, we try to address it in a quick and rapid manner, and then we'll report back to the police chief or they report back to me as well about the statistics that we gather when we're doing these speed enforcement initiatives, whether it's from an initiative, a traffic plan initiative like this, whether it's from the Police Advisory Board, or whether it's from a citizen or board members or town manager or town employee. Enforcing speed limit encourages compliance. A lot of the times when we, when we work on whether it's a new speed zone or whether it's a school zone, and it's the beginning of, say, the beginning of the school year, we initially start off with trying to give out warnings, just a simple warning to say, hey, school is now in session, the speed limits are going to be enforced, and pretty much an education where it's a one-on-one conversation with a violator to say, hey, please pay attention to the speed limits, these are, are going to be strictly enforced. After it's been in place for a while, it becomes strict enforcement, and because of the strict enforcement, it's compliance, it's a punitive assessment to court costs, it's points on a driver's license, and those things kind of start to add up, and enforcement encourages not only compliance, but it reduces crashes, it reduces injuries, and it reduces death involved in those crashes. Especially with speeding, anytime speeding increases, the injuries increase, the total loss for damages increases, and the risk of death also increases. So the faster you go, the more likely you are to be involved in a collision that involves a serious injury or death. That is our traffic plan initiative as we're going forward. Is there any questions from the board for me on what we can do to address the traffic law violations within the town?
I think y'all doing a good job. We had ESPN producer who came down to the cookhouse. He was from New York City, and he did, he was doing 35 and 20, and y'all gave him a pretty hefty ticket. He was complaining about it. I said, well, you're lucky, your mother took him to jail.
Yes, yes, sir. I was made aware of that particular citation, and we tried to, we tried to do our best as far as enforcement is concerned, you know. We do have a threshold where if it's 12 or 13 over, most likely someone's going to get a citation, it's just a matter of trying to reduce the speeds. I know we're, we're a very unique town in that we have 20 mile an hour speed limits on the town streets, but we do express that to people that we stop, whether it's a citizen or somebody from out of town, that all of our town streets are 20 miles per hour. So we do, we do express that, and then there's, there's these certain areas that we, we have gotten some, I've gotten one on Sir Walter Raleigh well over 50 miles an hour. We've gotten some on Bowser Town well into the 40s, and that there's just some of those, there's, we can't really give a warning to, that's just gross violation, and it, and it ends up in a citation. We try to explain to violators when we do write them citations, this is what you can do to take care of this citation, these are your options, these are your administrative court date options in dealing with a DA or dealing with the court to try to seek some kind of reduction. That's not something that we, as police officers, we can't reduce things on the side of the street, we're not a lawyer, we're not a judge, so we let the, let the courts handle that. What we do, express to them how they can go about their options on taking care of a citation.
Well, he's still agreeing to do the story on P. Island.
Well, I'm glad he's still doing the story. Any other questions or anything I need to address?
Yeah, I have, there's one more hotspot you didn't mention.
Yes.
Wengena and Borla.
Yes.
That is a hotspot.
Yes, it is. We've had some complaints on Wengena. We have deployed the radar trailer one time. We have deployed the radar trailer one time over there. And right there at Barlow, it becomes, because we have two school zones at the same time, so we have the one on 64, then we have the one on Wingina at Barlow at the same time. As it gets so congested at Barlow and Wingina, it's hard for us to sit on the side of the road safely, which we try hard because we, sometimes we have to use the side of the street. We don't wanna take up the sidewalk, we have so many people coming in. But we make a big loop. I know, I do, I can speak personally, I make the big loop. I come down Harriet, back to Wingina and try to focus on Barlow. Where you, because we get a lot of stop sign violations there. It's a hard corner to see out of.
It is.
So you'll get people coming out of the elementary school, coming from Barlow to Wingina. They won't pay attention to the stop sign, which has a dual crosswalk as well. So you're trying to make sure the pedestrians are safe across there and then you're trying to enforce the speed limit as well. Plus it's a narrow street. So yes, that is a very difficult location. That's one of the difficult locations that I mentioned in here where it's hard to deploy the radar trailer because it's just not safe enough for us to put, the radar trailer becomes a distraction.
Put it in my yard, I don't care.
If we can get access to some more speed signs, that's probably gonna be best for us to use the smaller speed sign, which is the same size as the speed limit sign we put up on a post and that'll collect data as well. And that's what we're trying to target in that particular area.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Before I ask my question, just by the way, you know, while you're up there, Halloween was, you guys were everywhere and it seemed like there was no issues, but it was a testament to, you know, the police force and the community. I felt like, you know, Officer Rhodes was from a Scooby Doo movie. It was like every door he'd come out of, I don't know how many of you got out there, but it was another good Halloween there. But that speed trailer and you kinda mentioned something else. I mean, maybe again, looking forward to next year's budget and if you guys need anything like that, that would help. There are so many hotspots and I don't, you know, that trailer might as well never see a closed door. There's always somewhere for it to sit. But is there, is there anything like that that you guys will need that can help us kinda get this a little bit? Like I said, you get one street, they move to the other, so it's tough and it's never gonna end, but we gotta keep trying to keep people safe.
Yes, for your reference to Halloween, Halloween, we actually had a very strategic plan to put people in particular locations. So if you saw the same officer over and over again, there was a particular reason for that. It really depended on what area and the town that you were in and what officer you were gonna see very often. So I know, me personally, I got to do a lot of interaction with the citizens and they enjoy seeing us. We get a chance to just chit chat, say, you know, talk to the kids about their little Halloween costumes and I saw some very good ones. But we did, we did a lot of, there was, you know, most of, almost all the Police Department was working. Will Land wasn't here, he was on approved vacation, which he put in well in advance. So we gave him that vacation time, but there was plenty of police presence and a lot of interaction with the citizens and we got a lot of positive interaction. We didn't have any serious calls for service or any complaints about police presence. Everybody had a really good time for Halloween. And as far as equipment for traffic data collection, as I expressed earlier, these things just, they're so expensive. And the cost has been driven up, you know, inflation and everything else, everything's a little bit more expensive. A lot of these things are built overseas, so it's harder to get them in a timely manner. Sometimes it may take seven or eight months to get a speed sign or something like that. But there's definitely something that we can take into consideration to try to get more equipment that'll help us because it definitely helps. And a lot of the times, if you stay with the same manufacturer, they work together with the same software program. And to just kinda go in detail with that, like with the particular radar that we use, it has a particular software program that you use to collect the data and then analyze the data. And a lot of the things that we're looking at as the Police Department, the main thing that we look at is called the 85th percentile violation or speed. So what it does is it takes all of the cars, analyzes everything and that 85% of what that, what those vehicles are traveling is gonna be your reported 85th percentile, which takes out those that are traveling well less than the speed limit and those that are traveling well higher than the speed limit. Because sometimes these, this equipment can produce erroneous speed errors. Where you may get a reading of 115 or 110 and you know that they're not running that on Sir Walter Raleigh or Fernando. It's just an erroneous reading that happens with any radar system. And when we're trained to run radar into vehicles, we're trained to recognize those errors. That's why we don't take enforcement on those particular errors. There's a certain way that you have to run radar, there's procedures that are mandated by the state that you have to follow in order to use those particular instruments. But yeah, we'll definitely take into account some new equipment to definitely help us along.
With COA and then, you know, if other development in town happens, you know, you put more and more people walking down the street and you add that with people speeding down the street and then you don't wanna wait for, you know, we should've done this before that happened.
Yes, we'll definitely take that into consideration. And like I said, we have access to some speed signs in other towns and we'll use those and eventually I think we'll have to look at purchasing something, some other equipment here to work with that particular radar trailer until we're working in conjunction. But thank you for your suggestion.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Your presentation was very informative and I think listening to the board, you've heard your testament back to you guys of what kind of job you're doing in Mania. We're very proud of the Police Department in Mania.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. We appreciate your time. If anybody has any other follow-up questions or anything, feel free to either email, email me, call me, come see me upstairs, either way. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda, that would be item number 5C. This is an update on special events. And tonight we have Program Manager Michelle Bunce, who will be providing information to the board and to the community.
Good evening, Mayor and Board of Commissioners. Excited to be here. We have a lot going on, so I'll try not to make it too long. There's a lot of great things happening in Mania as always and as they say, it's a wonderful time of year, especially here in Mania, Christmas, so super excited about that. But did wanna say thank you to the Mania Police Department and Fire Marshal Kevin Zork. They put a lot of time and effort into the incident action plans that go into place for these larger events that take place in the town. And that is an integral part of keeping this community safe during these events and they do an outstanding job. I've been in the events industry 20 years now and I've never seen anything quite like them. So I'm very proud and excited to work with them. They've made my job a lot easier, I can say. So first on the slide, we can go on, is the Town of Mania Litter Pickup Day. We're so excited to bring this back. It's been a while. So it comes just in time to get the town looking even prettier, it's always pretty, but even prettier for the Christmas events and New Year's. So it will be Saturday, November 13th from 9:00 to 11:00. That is the flyer, it's on your desk there. You can come in at 8:45 for donuts and coffee to get your little juice up before you go out. It's a great way to get some exercise, get outside and see all our wonderful things happening in Mania. We do get to work with a lot of civic groups, church groups, like the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts. Coastal Federation is really neat because they do the Marsh Sweep. So this is not just a land litter pickup, this is also on the water. So we cover all areas of Mania and we really do appreciate their efforts there. That is a, that's a large endeavor there. And already mentioned it was part of the preparations for the events. And the event is held in honor of Rodney Crowe Murray, who was a previous employee for the Town of Mania. So we're just very excited to bring this back and it is, we meet at the Maritime Museum. We got all new pickers and gloves and everything from last year. We're able to use some funds that were available from not having any events, so we use that opportunity to get some new things to have our volunteers and everybody stay safe as possible for the event. Anybody have any questions for this one? No? All right. And then next up, Christmas Events and Activities. This is a couple slides. So we have a lot of things going on for Christmas this year. It's super exciting, it's always been one of my most favorite times here in Mania. I would actually get really upset because I couldn't make some of these events because I would be working weddings all the time. So I'm really excited to be here. First up is the Garden Club, the wreath contest that they do every year. This kinda kicks off everything. They are already gonna be in the community this week, starting tomorrow, taking the wreaths around door-to-door to businesses and organizations. And it is a huge part of our town decorations. So once they're all submitted, they come to Town Hall, we do a judging, then we actually put those up all throughout town. And we do try and put the wreaths as close as possible to the businesses that actually submitted the wreath. But the only ones that aren't are the ones who win, first, second, third, fourth. And last year we did honorable mention because we had so many come in last year, which was wonderful. So we had over 30 wreaths come in last year, so we kinda took advantage of that and gave some more prizes out, some more recognition to the hard work that they do and it's really nice to see their participation in that. And the Rhode Island Garden Club, they do a wonderful job. They put a lot of time and effort into this and they do pay on the payment. They take a lot of time to go door-to-door, so we do appreciate all their efforts with that. Last year we also were able to purchase new wreaths to provide to the businesses. So the town does purchase the wreaths and provide them to the businesses as well. And that's just a picture of some of the winners from last year. Any questions for this one? No? All right. And then Santa Ride was awesome. This was one we did last year. This was a creation that came out of the challenges that we faced last year with everything going on, but it was so fun and the community really, really enjoyed it. And so we are bringing it back this year with exciting news that we will be able to publish the route this year. So you can follow along and know where Santa's at and what time he's there. Last year we were not able to do that because of the state's restrictions on mass gatherings. So that's why we're not able to do that. This year we are able to do so and we're excited to do that and be able to just kinda follow along with Santa and see where he's at. We're basically keeping the same route and just trying to hit as much of town as possible. The guiding factor really is the fire truck where it can actually safely maneuver through town. So that's pretty much the, and we do appreciate all the time and efforts and the volunteer service from the Rhode Island Volunteer Fire Department for that. They take their time, you know, their gas for their equipment and everything that they do with that. That's a great, great collaboration there. And, do you have any comments on the Santa Ride? Are you excited we're doing the route this year? All right, tree lighting, yay! It's like the big official kickoff. Friday, December 3rd, of course, at 6:00 PM, we will have all the traditional activities of caroling, dancing, the fire pit, food, Santa photos upstairs in the Arts Council, all those traditional things we are definitely doing. And we have a lot of groups that have already signed up and are putting into the program this year. We are gonna add a couple of new things, excited about this. So part of the program this year will include a reading of 'Twas the Ninth Before Christmas and that's by a special guest that all our little kids in the community know very well. So we can't wait to see their little faces on that. At the same time, we'll have ornament crafts in the Dare County Arts Council Courtyard. They were very excited to do something this year as part of the tree lighting and it also helps to activate their courtyard, their new courtyard. So it's a great way to collaborate with them as well. And then cookie decorating at the Magnolia Pavilion, awesome, so excited. We have a group that's volunteered to take their time to be there with that. And we are trying to definitely still be safe in everything we do, so those will be bagged, pre-bagged for the kids, but it also serves a second purpose. So in the event that we, obviously we can't meet all the kids that are coming downtown, we don't want anybody to feel left out, so hopefully they will take away a bag. So everything will be pre-bagged, so they can just take a bag with them and do it at home with their grandma, grandma, or their parents. So we're really excited about that. And it does kinda help spread out the crowds. So you have the Arts Council, you have the Christmas Tree Lot with things going on, and Magnolia Pavilion and it just kinda keeps people kinda hopefully moving around because it is a large crowd for that. So we're really excited about a couple of new features and just while keeping the traditions that are well-loved, you know, still also adding some new things to the event, so. Anybody have any questions about that one? That's kind of a baby.
Yes, I do. At the tree lighting ceremony, is there gonna be a stage show set up?
Yes, there will be. There will be a stage at the Arts Council.
Like tradition has been?
Yes, sir.
With the monitors and all that?
So the stage will be there. The monitors, the monitor in the Christmas Tree Lot, we had some concerns about that. There was actually feedback from that, that was kind of a safety issue, people tripping and it really wasn't something, but the Subcommittee actually suggested not to have that one this year in the Christmas Tree Lot. That was a recommendation by the Subcommittee.
Really? It's been tradition to have the monitors for the Christmas tree lighting?
And that's, I mean, if the Board of Commissioners wants to suggest that, I'll take it back to the Subcommittee. I'll be happy to.
Please.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. All right, any other questions about it?
I know no one likes touching any trees here, but does our tree need a haircut? Is it, I mean, I know Frankie's back there. It's a little bit wonky sometimes. I don't know if it's appropriate to or not, or if we can, let's fill the lights too, but...
It will be getting some TLC before it gets lit. Yes, sir. It's a good question. It deserves some love, right? It's a center of attention, so, no doubt. Any other questions about that one? All right, super excited. Then the next day, Christmas Parade. This is same traditional event that the town has been doing every year. We have people already sitting in their forms, very excited to be back this year. We have our wonderful parade gurus back this year that are also on our Special Events Subcommittee that will be doing it, Mr. and Ms. Woody. It is a well-oiled machine, they know what they're doing and I'm super excited to have them on board and can't wait to see all the different flavors this year. But we will have the stage set up still in front of the Arts Council for that as well. Any questions?
Yeah, usually traditionally we had different bands in the parade, or is that still happening?
Yes, so we've reached out to some different, some new things, yeah, definitely. So all like ones that definitely have been in years past and then some new people for sure.
Good.
Oh, most definitely. And if you ever have any suggestions, please feel free to call or email me any time when they need suggestions for those, for sure. Definitely don't wanna leave anybody out. All right. Okay, next one. All right, I know everybody's gonna focus on that cute little picture out there. But Food and Coat Drive is something that the Mania Police Department actually coordinated last year. It was a wonderful initiative that they brought forward. This year they are gonna bring it back and it was also a great opportunity. The P Island Preservation Society came on board and so this is an opportunity to work together with them. And I'll say, I was down there last year and it was super exciting. It was like a party down there. Music, it was just really festive and had tons of people donate coats and food and it was just a wonderful time and the town's so lucky to have the two great locations that they had it at, at P Island and Magnolia. They both were great areas to get people through. This year we moved the Magnolia to Town Hall and just kinda give some love to different parts of the town as well. And it's a great area to turn people around. And this is where actually the food and stuff ends up in this area, so it's a little bit more help for some of the staff bringing it in. Because we did receive a lot of food. We did not weigh it and it was just a lot of food. We didn't get a chance to actually weigh it, but really what we focused on was the weight that it lifted off of the community for the need that was there. So that was more important than actually how much food was there. So we were just excited that that was there. And we are bringing it back this year and you guys have the flyer and that actually went out tonight. So there's a lot of things going out on the town website and social media, so it's, we're pasting it right now so that people don't get a little overloaded with it. Nothing gets lost in there. But if you see there, the, obviously the local food pantries are the ones who will benefit from the food and the non-perishable items and the Coats for Kids, the coats will go for that program and also the Delana Collins Coat Drive for Kids. Did I get it right, Mr. Collins?
Not close enough.
So we're excited about that. It's a great time. Definitely looking for volunteers for that as well, so just come on out and have a good time. Santa Mailbox is that cute little picture right there. That's a famous little fellow in our town. That went over really well. That was a new addition last year to the Christmas tree. And we had letters come from not just locals, but we had from all over, like Colrain, Hurford, some other areas. We even had some hurry animals that submitted their letters to Santa. So it was a lot of fun and actually I brought, we had almost 70, it was like 60 letters, but this is what we found. And actually this is from that little guy right there. So we had lots of fun letters. They were really creative. Kids colored and pasted and taped and just stickers and all kinds of great stuff. And we read those on social media, Santa read those on social media. So this year we were talking about pairing up the marketing a little bit and just trying to look at some different ways to get those letters shared, not just on social media, but kind of working with some other local organizations. So we'll share some more information about that later. Making Storefronts Bright and Deck the Homes Contest was also something that was created out of last year. We weren't able to do as many things, as many events, and that went over really well. It was a great effort to reach out to the local businesses and organizations and also the people that live here. the people that live here in our community. And hey, it decorates the town as well. So as part of that engages the community much, much more. And that's what we really loved about last year, even through everything that was going on in our, you know, in our area, in our town, in our country. But it was just, it just felt like some of the things we were doing, the Santa Ride and the cost, you know, the contests and the mailbox, those were really just outreach. Those were more outreach to the community, for sure. And we really enjoyed kind of seeing and hearing from them more and just having everybody participate more as a whole, as a community. We did get some, they are random drawings, so there are three winners in each of those categories. So people submit their photos, or they, we go around town, look at the businesses. We put all the names in a hat, a bowl, whatever it may be, and it's a random drawing. We won't, we don't want anybody to feel like they have to, you know, be the Christmas shot, this wonderful designer. It's really about who they are, you know? Tell us who you are, and it shows us, you know, who they are. We want to get to know our community better. So this was a really great event to do. Definitely was filled with a lot of holiday spirit, favorite thing. Town decorations leading into that. Obviously, it was part of the decorations, just like the wreaths. We took the opportunity last year with some funds to replace a lot of things that were kind of older, maybe some safety hazards we identified, and purchased some new things. Enhanced decorations in certain areas of the town, just kind of broke it up in different areas and kind of focused different, different things. And new, this year, Town Common will be new, and will be new to that list as well. So we'll be adding some decorations there. So Mania is already, already a beautiful area, but we'll just light it up and make it a little bit pretty for Christmas. Anybody have any questions about those? It's a lot. All right, next slide. All right, New Year's Eve. So this year, New Year's Eve is a town-sponsored event. It is obviously Friday, December 31st, from 6:00 to midnight. We will have the traditional events that have been here in the past, music with live bands, kids' activities, a variety of those, food, and fireworks, of course, fireworks. So a lot of those traditional things. We are working with the New Year's Eve Subcommittee on finalizing, finalizing more details about more activities and confirming the bands that we have already under review. So those are in the works, and we're meeting with them this week again more. We've been working with them for a few weeks now, but we actually have another meeting with them this week. And not to forget, thank you to the Outer Banks Business Bureau for the event grant that they gave us, an amount of $25,000. It's definitely gonna help with the fireworks, and we appreciate their help and their support in that. Any other questions about New Year's? We'll have more information to share about that, too.
All right, I got one or two about New Year's. Excellent presentation, by the way, all the way through. And Christmas should be a special month and celebration in Mania, as it always has been. I think we've always participated well with the lighting and Christmas decorations and what have you. But New Year's Eve, I'm not seeing anything yet on social media, Facebook. Here's, here's my problem.
Sure.
And it should be Jason's, don't mean nothing by it. But people have to plan their weekends, and if we're gonna have a New Year's Eve celebration, we need to get the word out to Washington DC, Richmond, Tidewater, Virginia, Eastern North Carolina, what we're having. So if the people do want to come, I'm not saying they are, they can start booking their reservations now, because it won't help the shops, because the shops will be closed. But the restaurants and the eating places and the tap joints and the motels, these people have to make reservations, book early, and that's why I'm saying, I think we need to get the media out there. That's all I'm saying, Michelle. You're doing a wonderful job.
No, it's definitely a well point taken.
Yeah, that's, that's the only thing, because we, we have agreed to take it on this year.
Sure.
And I'm hoping we can get, say, some banks to contribute a little more money or some... We won't get many contributions from the businesses, I don't think, because they won't gain anything from it, but the time will gain from it, the publicity, the media, the excitement, you know? Just, just my thoughts. I don't mean anything by it, of course. Because you're doing a wonderful job, by the way.
Well, thank you. No, I love feedback, and definitely, it is, you know, getting the word out there is very important, and that's where we've been trying to balance the Christmas and the Halloween and the...
I know, I know.
It's like lovely, they're all together, and it's wonderful.
It seems to be together, but it's apples and oranges, really.
Yeah, it's, but it's, you know, it's so exciting that we have that many things going on, and that, that is a challenge to balance them all.
Yeah.
That's an exciting, it's, there is a small write-up on the website, it's been on there a little bit, just saying that there are more details to come. That is up there right now, but I will definitely get to work on putting some more on social media. This week's kind of full of all the Christmas stuff going out, but next week, we'll have more room, for sure. But I have been working with the local B&amp;Bs already prior to this, months ago, letting them know that we're doing New Year's Eve.
Oh, I'm sure you have.
Which was great, yeah.
I'm sure you have. I'm not questioning you at all.
Oh, no. No, not at all. No, those are good, good, I'd much rather hear from you than not hear from you, for sure. So those are just one of the things. So if you guys have any ideas, though, about how to spread the word any further, that's always welcome to, just like that. So that was one way we thought maybe to hit the ends specifically. Commissioner Boyle, you're always here, so you get the benefit.
I was thinking, I was thinking we might get two or three days out of this. See, they come in, I don't know when, it was Friday. They, they might come in Thursday, might come in Friday and go to our event Friday night and might hang around until Sunday.
They are.
So if some shops stay open, I mean, they could.
They are.
Give you an extra day.
Yeah, the train lengths get a lot.
I believe we're full, too, so.
I'm sure you are.
That's the feedback we're getting, is that they're making a weekend out of it.
I was joking. I don't get paid for being on your side.
But, yeah. We'll have some fun with it. We'll have to put some more things out there just to get some more word about it out quicker. We'll do some fun little social media posts with that, maybe to engage the community some more with that, to help. Anybody else have any questions about that?
I do.
Yes, ma'am?
Have any, I know probably what, six, seven months I had recommended a local band. Have you communicated with them?
Yes, ma'am, we have. So we've communicated with local bands, for sure. Well, there's been four local bands that we've been communicating with.
Specifically the band I recommended, so yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, most definitely. Yeah, we definitely, we love your recommendations and thoughts, so please, please feel free to bring them anytime. So lastly, I just wanted a huge thank you and shout out to the staff, the volunteers, special events and subcommittee members, just everyone. It is a true team effort, these events and everything we do. The subcommittee and special events committee members have been not just idea sharing or just out there talking to people, but they're, they're, you know, helping to pass out flyers and posters, and they're just doing a lot of different things, and we couldn't really do this without their help. The staff has been exceptional. Same with volunteers and just people in the community sharing information on events, you know, in prior history, just to help me learn, becoming, you know, as a new member to the town staff. And so that's been greatly appreciated. So I just wanted to say a huge thank you to them, and they are very enthusiastic, and they are so dedicated to the town. That is not hard to realize why. You would want to be dedicated to the town. It's a wonderful town, so. Anybody have any other questions?
All right. Thank you, Michelle, so much for your presentation.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
James? Right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next up on the agenda, this is item number six. It is for information. This is the public comment section. Members of the public are invited to address the Board of Commissioners on any topic. Public comment is not intended to require the Board to answer any impromptu questions or to take any action on items brought up during this period. Speakers will address all the comments to the Board as a whole and not one individual. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Time limits are three minutes per person or five minutes per group. Please come forward to the lectern and identify yourself so your statements can be recorded.
My name is John Robbins. I reside at 109 Puddle Lane. I'm speaking for a group tonight, Mr. Chris Williams, the property owner. So I'm not gonna, I'll try to limit it, not take the full five, but just a few extra minutes. Been before y'all a whole lot, and hopefully tonight's the last time I come before you to discuss this matter. It's been a long time. I'm gonna read a couple of things because of how we're here, and this is directly from the land use plan. On page 30 of your land use plan, it says upland wetlands are not considered AECs. AECs are the area of environmental control that's under the jurisdiction of CAMA. All the wetlands on Mr. Williams' property that we're discussing and have been discussing are within the AEC. Again, it says, based on your land use plan, page 30, upland wetlands are not considered AECs. The next sentence on page 30 says, because wetlands are dynamic systems, their boundaries are constantly shifting. The wetlands map in this document, your land use plan, rely on data with the resolution of just one acre. These factors limit the accuracy of the regional wetlands mapping. Site-specific wetland delineation is therefore needed in order to gather accurate wetlands information at a finer scale. With this stated, the Army Corps of Engineers has been on the site. They approved the wetlands line. CAMA's been on site, approved the wetlands line. An environmental specialist, certified environmental and wetland specialist has been on site. All have determined there's no upland wetlands on the site. Yet, for some reason, the town staff says there's upland wetlands on the site, when it says you can't rely on the maps. Somebody please ask a question. What are they relying on to determine the upland wetlands on the site? Because their determination has grave effect on the property owner. So again, it says, you know, I know that y'all can hear me, and I know that you're listening. It says the wetland maps in this document rely on data with the resolution of just one acre. These factors limit the accuracy of regional wetlands mapping. Site-specific wetland delineation is therefore needed in order to gather accurate wetlands information. I did all that, but yet town staff says there's upland wetlands on the site. Page 116 has, this is in the land use plan, policy 36. Again, it says, site-specific delineation of wetlands are needed due to the dynamic nature of wetland systems. I mean, again, you heard what I said. It says, when this poli, and then this is a way out of this whole thing, because a mistake has been made by town staff. A way out of this is in Water Policy Policy 36, it says, when this policy presents a threat to the health, safety, and welfare of the community, the town may make an exception so, so long as it adheres to all other policies in this land use plan. Make an exception, because the town has made grave errors in dealing with this and in their determination. It says upland wetlands, this is on page 133 of your land use plan. Upland wetlands are defined by their hydric soils and vegetation, which distinguishes from similar upland communities. The upland wetlands that occur on Roanoke Island are primarily managed pylon and pine flats with smaller patches of freshwater marsh, picocin, depressional swamp forests, maritime farms, forests, and human-impacted marshes. None of those conditions as identified by the Corps, by CAMA, by the certified wetland specialists exist on the site. Again, ask staff what they're using, why they've come up with that determination, because are they strictly relying on maps, or have they had a person go out there and do a site-specific delineation? Ask who they're referring to. Ask them that before you make a decision. North Carolina, I'm out of the land use plan now, and it says, North Carolina Wetland Assessment Method, NCWAM, was developed by the North Carolina Division of Environmental Quality, specifically for North Carolina, and these types are generally recognized in South Carolina as well. There are sixteen general wetland types in North and South Carolina. Everyone is recognized, all the specialists of the wetlands in question are estuarium woody wetlands. And it says they're found along the edges of estuaries and salt or brackish marshes. These wetlands are occasionally flooded with salt or brackish tidal water, often due to storm surges. These storms can produce erratic tidal flooding and salinity levels in these wetlands. Estuarium woody wetlands are dominated by woody vegetation and provide habitat for trees such as lobolli pine, cedars, red maple, and sweet gum. Shrubs such as silvering marsh elder and wax merle are found in these wetlands, along with various herbaceous plants. These wetlands can vary in area, and, I mean, but that's what North Carolina uses. So I'd say there is a way out. Now, the last thing, you say, well, John hasn't applied for a wetlands permit, I mean, for a CAMA permit. I haven't applied for a CAMA permit, because the division head of CAMA for our area, this is many months ago, he said, hey, John, do you understand that the town of Mania, that you can't fill wetlands in the town of Mania? I said, man, Ron, you're crazy. He said, man, they've denied several permits out there. And I said, what do you mean? Well, they've said that it's not consistent with the land use plan. So then I started investigating this, and unfortunately, that man called me many months ago. I wish I'd never taken the call, because I wouldn't have had to have done all this. But I feel injustice has been done to this guy. So ask those questions, because I've done everything in your land use plan, everything. And yet, they keep calling it upland wetlands out there. And I don't want to apply for a permit when I know I'm gonna get it denied. And so hopefully, this is the last time I speak before y'all on this matter. I wouldn't invest this time in it if I knew that it was improper or if the town had made a mistake. And last thing, I called yesterday, because I'd heard from no town staff on this matter, because for sixty days, it was advertised. Sixty days, it was advertised to the public.
Johnny, I've given you a little bit of extra time. Go ahead and wrap it up. Take, take your time, wrap it up. Go ahead.
But the planning board unanimously approved it, wanting to change the ordinance. The last meeting, I knew nothing about it. They stood up and said, hey, we don't like the language. Well, why didn't town staff work out that before it was put out for advertisement? They, they approved it, they approved the language, and then at that meeting, that was the first I heard of it, the planning board stands up and says, well, we don't like the language the town staff came up for. So let's penalize John again and have him wait. And all I can say is, CAMA likes to put in, and I'm finishing on this, Mayor Owens, CAMA likes the bulkheads to all go in, so that they're all level and on all one plane. When you start putting corners in, the wave action gets in there and increases amplification and erosion. The other thing is his pilings, if you say, oh, we'll do it later. Well, to understand, you would put that bulkhead in first, because you have dead men and other things back there. You can't do that once the house is there. And then the last thing is that, you know, the pilings out here on the other side of the bulkhead, they're gonna take a beating from storm surges and things of that. So I would ask that you either pass an amendment that strictly limits it to Pirate's Cove and the revised language that just limits it to Pirate's Cove, or you look at your land use policy and say, John did everything. There's not upland wetlands on the site as determined by professionals.
Johnny, I've got to ask you to sit down.
Thank you.
Anyone else? James?
I don't see anybody else uprising to speak, Mr. Mayor. All right. Would you like me to go on to the next agenda item, sir?
Would anybody else like to be heard? All right, we'll close public comment period.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next up on the agenda, this is old business. This item eight, this item 7A is consideration of land use plan amendments. This item was carried over when it was tabled from the last meeting. It had previously had public hearing, statements by the various involved parties, and the, It had previously had public hearing, statements by the various involved parties, and the board chose to table it from the last meeting to this meeting. So this would be the time if the board chooses to consider this matter, that's what it's on the agenda for. Thank you, sir.
Okay. You've heard from the town manager. I think I'm going to listen to the board. Anyone want to start it off?
I've got a question. In reference to the public comments we made. Is it a yes or no answer? Is it upland wetlands on that property? I mean, is that a yes or no? I don't know. I'm probably the one in the building that knows the least about wetlands. But it seemed that, we've been talking about it a lot, and thank you Attorney Gallup for addressing it, but is it a yes or no answer? And it keeps bouncing back and forth, bouncing back and forth. Is it a solid answer?
As the upland wetlands are defined in your land use plan, yes. And they are based on a site-specific plan that was provided by Mr. Robbins himself. The problem is, and Mr. Robbins' analysis points it out clearly, his Mr. Robbins tells you that KAMA doesn't define upland wetlands, the feds don't define upland wetlands. Well, the point is that your land use plan does define upland wetlands. And what it says is, there's two kinds of wetlands on Roanoke Island. There's coastal wetlands, which are KAMA wetlands, and it defines them the exact way that KAMA defines them. And there are other wetlands, and those are called upland wetlands by the land use plan. So any wetlands in the town of Manio, as far as the land use plan is considered, are either coastal wetlands, or they're upland wetlands. What happened in this case that is creating the confusion and creating the problem is that the way the feds determine four oh four wetlands, and let me back up just one second. There's another provision in the land use plan that also limits the upland wetlands, the other wetlands that are considered under the land use plan, as those that are also four oh four federal wetlands. The federal Corps of Engineers designation of the wetlands is usually, it's a little bit different than KAMA's, and it usually goes a little bit farther inland. So they both look at vegetation and hydrology. And in this case, Mr. Robbins' plat showed that there was a delineation for where the coastal KAMA wetlands stopped. And then, if you go inland a little bit farther, there's a delineation for where the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers federal wetlands are. And what the upland wetlands are, the ones in that gap. So the four oh four wetlands also go farther out, but the coastal wetlands overlap that. But the area between the two, that's four oh four wetlands still, is what is upland wetlands under your land use plan. So in this particular case, there is a site-specific plan that relates to that. It's the one that Mr. Robbins provided. But what the amendments try and do is, one, to clarify that definition, so you don't have to look in multiple places to figure it out. And also, then, to allow filling, initially, before it went to the planning board, it allowed filling just in that gap area of four oh four wetlands in the Pirate's Cove area. After that, the planning board changed, dropped the Pirate's Cove part, and made it broader to all town wetlands. And one thing to address there, last week, there were some discussions about wetlands in other areas of town. The way it's defined also is limited to wetlands that abut coastal wetlands or abut sound waters. So if there's a gap like this that appears on a property after delineation, then it would only be fillable or development allowed in it under the land use plan if it also abutted coastal wetlands. So it's going to be on the edge around the marsh areas. And another thing that's important to recognize is, this is a KAMA permit issue, and KAMA has the ability to determine consistency itself. It typically asks the town whether or not things are consistent with the land use plan. But the reason that we couldn't make an ordinance change and have to be here to make a land use plan change is because the permit that's at issue is a KAMA permit that the town has no ability to adjust, other than, you know, their response to KAMA.
Ben, I want to get very clear in my mind. I'm still confused, I will admit it. This upland wetlands, marsh shoreline wetlands, wetlands, wetlands. I'm not much of a KAMA person, even though it fills a need, a real need, to protect our marshes and our wetland. But as any other agency is concerned, and I understand that KAMA's not involved, because they're saying they're not too interested in this as far as Pirate's Cove is concerned. So I'm just confused of what we have to do not to approve or disapprove or change our site ordinances for Pirate's Cove area. Is that right?
Well, the two that came from the planning board that are in the packet tonight would apply to all of the--
It would apply to all, not just Pirate's Cove.
My recommendation, if you wanted to apply it to Pirate's Cove only, it's pretty simple language to add--
Well, that's what I'm saying. It'd be easy to do, but I remember, I had nothing to do with municipal government, knew nothing about it, but I remember Stanford White had Pirate's Cove, it was called Satellite Annexation at the time, and that was many years ago. And it was set aside, Pirate's Cove is part of Manio, but yet, it would be in Manio. And that's the way I see it now. I go back to, at one time, that all Pirate's Cove was marsh, total marsh. Look at it now, millions of dollars of value. I think Johnny has presented a good argument, though it was low in depth for me. But I don't see why it would make any difference to kind of isolate it to Pirate's Cove area. I just don't see why it'd make any difference now. If it would apply to all the town of Manio, is, I think you said, isn't that what you said?
What's in the packet right now would apply to the waterfront.
I'm really confused, Ben, that's why.
And it is confusing, but what's in the packet now would apply to all of the waterfront in the jurisdiction.
But couldn't we, could we leg, could we legally, as this board, change it to Pirate's Cove?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you're right.
We could do that with that number three option, couldn't we?
Correct.
Within the amendment?
Number four, on your--
I'm sorry, I didn't have my glasses on.
Adopted your possible motions.
Pirate's Cove only, or I'm sorry.
Well, you know, if we do it for Pirate's Cove, then the next person's going to say, "Well, you did it for Pirate's Cove, so you should do it for us."
I have a question. Is anything currently being prohibited by allowing or not allowing this amendment? Is construction going to take place? Has a permit been approved?
A permit has been approved, and a building permit has been approved for a different form of construction than the property owner and Mr. Robbins would like to construct
Come on, y'all get in. I don't have a vote.
I mean, is it, obviously, we've all had conversations about this, and this has been going on a long time. Is it appropriate to have town staff provide any more context on this matter at the moment?
Is there a, I'm sorry--
No, no.
Is there a permit process, I think it's called a variance, site variance permit, is there an actual site variance or a site-specific process for this situation?
They would need to apply to KAMA for a variance, because it's a KAMA permit that's at issue. And variances are not easy. I mean, an exceptional remedy, I don't know that they could get one or not. I haven't looked at the standards for KAMA variances, but my recollection is they're more stringent than your typical zoning variance in terms of what the standards are.
Well, there's one thing certain. We said last meeting, we would settle this tonight one way or the other, so I think we ought to bring in some kind of conclusion, whichever it is, to let, be fair to everybody. We can't keep dragging that. Now, I can see where they say we're doing a twenty-year plan, we are, but we can't wait twenty years to do this one way or the other. We need to make a decision one way or the other. It's unfair to everybody.
I think Johnny said earlier that it's considered upland wetlands, but they're not, what is it, AEC or apply or something, or something of that nature?
Well, what he says is that, is that KAMA defines different things as AECs.
AECs.
Right. And it's areas of environmental concern. Areas of environmental concern include coastal wetlands and other various things that are, I can't remember all the terms, but upland wetlands isn't listed as an AEC. And what Mr. Robbins is trying to tell you is that there is, there's something confusing in KAMA with regard to AECs. And one is that there are different areas of environmental concern that KAMA regulates. But then, the triggering for whether or not you need a KAMA permit is whether or not you're within what would be more of considered an AEC-type buffer. So it's, I think it's seventy-five feet, maybe John can tell you what it is, but it's a, there's a line, and it doesn't really care what's in there. There might be uplands, there might be wetlands, there might be anything in there, but if you're in that area, you've got to go get a permit. But what he's doing is equating the two, which is the areas of environmental concern that KAMA's concerned about, things like coastal wetlands, the concept, with an area that's delineated as, if you're in this area, which we call an AEC, you've got to get a permit. And I don't think that that changes anything about the analysis on your land use plan as to what upland wetlands are, because it's pretty clear under the land use plan what they are.
Well, we wouldn't be changing the whole plan, would we, Ben? We would just be tweaking it, if you would. That's my word, but--
Yes.
Isn't that right?
Yes, and I, and I think that that is a reason to also, for the two that are in front of you tonight, number one and number two, my recommendation that if you're going to adopt any of them, whether or not you limit it to Pirate's Cove or not, that you use number one, because it defines upland wetlands more clearly in one place, so you don't have to look multiple places, but it defines it the same way as it has been defined, so you don't have to worry about other extraneous changes. You just would be worrying about the changes that are here to deal with this one issue.
Just for my clarification, I'm sorry to keep circling back. But if a site one is approved right now, a building permit is approved or in the process, and we allow this, what are we physically changing if construction's going to take place anyway?
Well, the construction that is permitted is going to shift the building out over the four oh four wetlands and not allow fill. The construction that they would prefer is to have the building shifted more toward the roadway and be able to fill in the backyard, where the water is.
No, that's not correct. What we're proposing is that the building will stay exactly where it is right now. Some of the pilings on the building are going to be in the wetlands, in whatever, not upland wetlands, but in the wetlands, in the AEC, and the pilings will be there. The only difference will be, instead of having a bulkhead halfway under the building, you'd have a bulkhead that would be landwork, I mean, waterwork up those pilings. So your pilings would be in what would be filled.
You push the bulkhead out.
Yes, you push your bulkhead out, so it aligns with the adjacent property.
The difference is the fill.
The difference is the fill. The building doesn't shift, pushes to the right or any other way.
The difference is the fill. And the shift in the building was a proposal earlier to try and shift the building in a different way. So I hadn't seen the permit that was actually issued, but it's going to put pilings in a different place. But the fill's the real issue. That's what would change.
And this would still be, I'm going right back to it again, it's about third time, site-specific in a broad sense, I guess.
The change that, if you adopted either of these changes, it would not be site-specific. It would apply to this site, but it may apply to other sites. But you would have to, but as John pointed out, you would have to have some sort of, you know, site plan in front of you that had done the federal and state delineations to determine how it would apply to other sites.
So these things are site-specific. You were saying it's based on our map?
Well, it's not the map, just the language.
Okay, just the language.
The only map it's based on is the, a site plan that's, like in this case, there has been a site plan, and--
And that language in there that talks about it being site-specific, you know, alludes to it being kind of fluid, right, in the, and so it makes me wonder, how do you impact this site? And, you know, on the one hand, you've got, like you said, the bulkhead and trying to make it consistent to the neighborhood and adjacent properties. On the other, you have a lot of development that is close to happening right now, and a lot of, you know, unintentional consequences to this, as we talked about last time. And so it makes sense for this site, but we don't want to open the doors up to fill it up, you know? Obviously, anyone who lives here understands, these wetlands are sponge, and they help with flooding and everything, and they're super important. And so to impact a lot more than just this site is scary. I mean, it needs to be done properly. But if it's just a site, we're being consistent with the neighborhood, then that sounds great. And that's kind of where we're torn here, or where I am. So it, I guess I'd be looking for a path forward that is just site-specific to this, and I don't know that I see that.
Is this going to affect the housing project that the wetlands have met property?
It won't affect that, because those properties don't, that property doesn't abut coastal wetlands or sound waters. So the change that's in front of you only applies if it abuts coastal wetlands or sound waters.
Does that include the, you know, the old Wheat and Radish site as well, or properties there that are undeveloped?
It may. If there's an area of coastal wetlands that ends, and then there's an area of four oh four wetlands between that and the land, and the buildable land, and that abuts that way, yes, it would affect that, as it's currently in the proposal.
So that's where my hesitation lies. You know, when you talk about this site-specific, the impact is not great. I mean, obviously, to you, it's huge. But when it impacts the potential for a significant amount of properties elsewhere in town, that's what scares me about it.
That's, I agree with you. That's what I was saying. I'm trying to, maybe I went too far with site-specific. I was referring really to just Pirate's Cove, whatever the boundaries are, and nothing else.
But that can't be done--
Sure.
--before.
You'd have to add--
That's bad that Pirate's--
In Pirate's Cove subdivision to three different places.
Can't that be done, Ben?
Yes, sir.
That's what I'm saying. And if you exclude, nothing else would be included.
Then to Daryl's point, you know, do we set precedent for other parts of town anyway?
Let me just say this. Our first land use plan was done in nineteen eighty-one. Since then, we did two others, updated two others in two thousand and three and two thousand and seven. We had a lot of community involvement in that, and they set ten specific goals that the community wanted us to uphold. Number one was maintain small-town character, hometown sense of community and history. Number two was to protect upland wetlands and other environmental fragile areas on the island. Number three was to require new developers to be in character with the town. And number four was to maintain a natural edge of wetlands, forests, and waters around the town. Number five was to improve the quality of water in the Shalabag Bay. Out of those top fives, three were resource protection. And I feel that that mandated us to do what our citizens asked us to do to protect our uplands, our wetlands, in an effort to improve the quality of water in Shalabag Bay.
Well, we've heard a report from our own wastewater treatment department that our water is perfectly clean in Shalabag Bay now, which once it was not. And he made a report several months ago on Shalabag, the cleanliness of Shalabag Bay, that being Josh. And that ordinance was passed, what, how many years ago, fourteen, fifteen years ago? You can't live in the past. You just can't do it. You've got to move forward a little bit. All right, I'm ready for a vote. Y'all ready? So do you. You control the meeting. More discussion?
I've done before, I'll do it again. I make the motion to adopt option four and amendment two with amendment for Pirate's Cove voter. That, for the property.
Maybe I can reword for you. And you're sure, my recommendation would be to do option one--
I want two.
You want two?
Yes.
All right.
Well, why would you recommend option one?
Because the difference between the two is the definition of upland wetlands. And option two changes the definition so that it's, it's different from what was in there before. And--
in this particular instance, I don't think it, that it comes out any different for the rest of the analysis, but there's 150 more pages in the, in the, in the, um, land use plan that I wouldn't want to define it any differently than it's already been defined.
For clarification's sake, when you say option two, that is amendment one.
Can Mr. Williams build his property with what you recommended?
Yes.
On the way he wants to build it?
Yes.
Well, Reggie, you want a?
He has to do his bulkhead.
But he can, he can, he, he would be able to fill it.
To make his bulkhead in line with the neighbors and everything.
Yes. He would be able to fill it under, uh, under,
Well.
Under the amendment that's proposed as amendment one or amendment two.
We've got a motion on the floor. We need a second or dispense with it or something.
If he can do it, a warrant, can I change our motion to?
I, I can't really hear you.
I'm sorry, I, I keep forgetting I have it on. I said number amendment two. Could I change it to amendment one if it would help Mr. Williams out?
Yes. Uh, would you like me to propose a motion for you to adopt?
Yes.
Uh, clarify that, Ben.
Yeah, so.
I'm just changing.
Would you like to move to adopt the proposed resolution for land use plan amendment number one with the following amendments? The following amendments being the addition of the words "in the Pirate's Cove subdivision" between the words "or sound waters" and "which" on lines 23, well, let me, make, make.
How long have I written this?
Lines 23 and lines 24 of the proposed amendment, and the same within lines 44 and lines 45 of the proposed amendment.
Yes.
Don't ask me. I don't know what you're saying.
That's why I said.
Yeah, you can just say so moved.
So moved.
All right, until the motion, Richie's motion is on the floor. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
All right, there's a motion of second. All in favor of Richie's motion, say aye. Let's have a show of hands. Two. All opposed. Three. The motion dies.
Swing and a miss again.
All right, where do we go from here? That, that's over with. Uh, James?
I think we're spinning our wheels here. Are we gonna come, is this gonna come back to us again or what?
Mm-hmm.
Well, that, we can't consider that. That's up to the public, isn't it? Whether they want to do anything or not, we can't decide for them.
I mean, I, I think Ben kinda clear. I mean, we are going through updating, and if, as we get updated land use plan, which is driven by those things, and that, you know, those are written right in front of us, and, and we probably don't look at them enough. But, um, you know, it, it's probably not something that's gonna get updated bef, I mean, pushed through by, I mean, by me, certainly, um, until we've got that. If that changes something, then so be it, but.
All right, the motion's dead, and we'll move on to new business.
Thank you, sir. Um, item number eight. This is new business, and we have two items of new business. The first one is consideration of staffing levels. This particular item, uh, is in response to feedback from members of the Board of Commissioners, including but not limited to comments from the October 20th meeting, as well as prior sessions with board members. Uh, the focus on this, on this one was staffing levels, uh, with two particular areas in mind. First was the area of public works, and in this particular case, the, the items being assessed included review of the workload, both current and projected, that have shown increases, as well as available budget, because you can't just look at staffing without considering the budgetary impact, uh, both in the current budget year and in the future. Uh, then the same review took place for, then, so the, so I'm sorry. So for the public works department, the, uh, the proposal was for a full-time employee to be added to the public works department to address the increased workload. The assessment also indicated there's money available in the current fiscal year budget to, to fund that position, and it would not require an additional appropriation from the Board of Commissioners. Um, we also had a similar, a similar assessment on, there'd been a discussion of, of getting some part-time help, uh, potentially even with, uh, um, whether retired or former staff, get some part-time help in the, in the planning department. Uh, obviously, the, um, there had, obviously, the increased workload we talked about there, as well as special projects that are coming up as well. Now, they, the, that particular department also has, uh, available budget, so there would not be an additional appropriation needed there uh, in, in that department. Um, in this particular case, we also, as I mentioned, the staff report, we wanted to make sure we looked at future projections as well. So say for public works, you hire an employee, you wanna make sure future projections would enable you to keep that employee. And once, once person's employed, you wanna keep them employed and not, uh, not have a problem there. And, but based, based on what we saw in the current fiscal year, it seemed like, it seemed like an appropriate move. So the recommendation was to have the Board of Commissioners authorize the addition of one full-time position for public works and one part-time position in the planning department.
All right, you've heard the request from the town manager on the two position, one part-time, one full-time. Uh, any discussion? What's the feeling of the board? Can we have a motion?
I move to authorize addition of one full-time position for public work and one part-time position for the planning department.
All right, is there a second?
Second. You, that was both of them, right?
Uh-huh.
Sorry.
Okay, there's motion of second. All in favor of the town manager's recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you so much. Next up on the agenda, this is, this is item number eight B, and this is a review of Magnolia Pavilion proposals. Uh, back at, at last month, we had, uh, chatted with the board about the, uh, departure of a tenant from Magnolia Pavilion into some nearby, nearby shopping area over there, over there by the, at the Phoenix Shops. So it was a good thing to see someone graduate from one, uh, the, the small space there and graduate into, um, one of the larger, larger spaces. But it provided the opportunity to offer up the space at Magnolia Pavilion. Um, when we spoke to the board before, we were author, or the consensus was to do a request for proposals and talk to folks who might be interested in that, in that parcel. The key factors were like economic factors, you know, revenue generated, how many jobs are created, things like that. Activation of the space. We want that space to be active, so it helps the surrounding businesses in the downtown area. Of course, compatibility, we want something that's compatible with the, the uses around there. And last, of course, flexibility, because we want some flexibility on the lease term, uh, as that space is envisioned. Um, trying to see what time, type of term would be appropriate. So, well, five people, once we issued the request for proposals, uh, five folks had in, five folks had expressed interest in the space, one person toured the facility. Um, we only received one formal response, though, for that space, and it was from a, a group called Shut the Barn Door, who had previously been in town in some retail space and has some, uh, some interesting, uh, product there. So it's a retail, basically a retail use. Um, now the, as, as we saw the proposal from the staff report, it didn't necessarily address everything. For example, it didn't address how much rent would be paid. Um, it did speak to the firm's, uh, stability. It talked about activating the space with not just retail, but also doing classes and things like that, that could help draw people in. And they also talked about being compatible with other uses, like special events, the, making sure, because that needs to be a, a special event friendly area, because it does get some good amount of use. So if the board would like us to move forward, um, we would, we would either, we've got some options, of course. If, if, if that one propos, if that one option wasn't considered, uh, appropriate, we could certainly go out and re-advertise. Alternatively, if you'd like, we can actually go out and negotiate with the firm and try and firm up the details, things like what the lease rate would be, things like that, and bring it back to the board, because you may recall that if it's something that's, um, a year or more, that has to go to the board anyway by state law. So if the consensus of the board is for us to negotiate with Shut the Barn Door, we could go ahead and negotiate with them and bring a proposed lease back to you. Uh, and if they're willing to negotiate quickly, we could bring it back to you by the next meeting. Uh, at this point, Mr. Mayor, we're not looking for, for a motion, because that would only be if we brought a lease to you. But we'd just like to get some feedback from the board if they would like us to, to negotiate with the, the offerer, uh, Shut the Barn Door or not.
Well, you've heard from the town manager. What's wishes of the board?
Does putting, uh, someone in there impact any of the events and things you have going on?
Uh, no, sir. One of the things we had worked with the prior, the, the prior tenant, of course, is there are times where the space is being used by others. We've got various groups that have used it, um, and where we have to turn on the power to the event area. But in the last tenant, uh, who was doing a lot of the, the art and things like that, she would, at times, actually lease the pavilion to do some outside air classes and things like this. And we believe the new tenant, based on their proposal, will do some of that activation as well, so go beyond their space and actually perhaps lease out the adjacent space. So we wanna make sure, though, uh, as we said in our, our request for proposals, they are, they have to be well aware there's gonna be events going on around them a good bit, as we've seen, not just at Halloween, but throughout the year.
I'd certainly like to see town property be utilized and then not utilized. So my recommendation would be of course to negotiate and firm up some details and present it back to the board.
Just bring him back to the board.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, well, that doesn't need a motion. James, just go ahead and do it.
Great. Thank you so much. Appreciate the feedback from, from, from the board. Uh, next up on the agenda, item number nine. This is mayor and commissioner comments.
I don't have any comments. Richie?
No, sir, I'm thinking.
Since this is your last meeting, give a good one.
I got one more. I got one more meeting.
Oh, yeah, I know that. You got till December. Oh, that's right. We only got one more.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Eddie?
I do, uh, about the, uh, move to authorize another full-time position for the works. I know we just went through a, uh, kind of a mini salary study of the police department.
Mr. Williams.
I would love to see town staff do the same thing for the public works department. I know they're short-staffed, and I know we have, I'm sure we have more events than the other town in the county. And they bear a lot of that burden. And I think it would be appropriate, uh, that they're compensated fairly. So I think it would be nice if the town staff, public works director Frankie, could, uh, maybe do something similar to the police department presented in a, uh, public works comparison to other town counties and see what we can do to, uh, compensate our employees that would probably utilize the most.
Yes, sir. Understood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Uh, well, James, you can just take that as our advisement, because you'll be here and maybe bring it back next meeting.
Yes, sir.
Betty?
I don't have anything.
Darrell?
Let everybody know that the town manager is leaving. And, um, I'd just like to thank James for all his hard work. He brought a new dimension to the town. You were the last, or were the first to be here in the morning, the last to leave. I think every decision you made was in the best interest of the town and its citizens. Uh, with that said, I think we should move forward in trying to, uh, acquire a new town manager using the same process that we did before. Using, uh, the Ellis, what was his name, Ellis?
Ellis.
Using Ellis, his firm, to solicit applications for the position. I think we also need to bring Shannon on board with the town manager, so she could be, uh, the acting town manager with pay. And you, you only got one month left, right?
Yes, sir, December 17th.
Okay. So, uh, she needs to start working closely with, uh, Mr. Ayers to, uh, come on speed of what's going on in the town.
I don't disagree with anything you said, but the board will totally change December the 1st. And I think it'd be unfair for the new incoming members of the board to take on this burden in the past. Uh, I think we should leave this decision till, uh, the first meeting in December. And so the new board members can have a chance to express themselves also, because they will be here four years. But that's just my comments.
Well, I think those two, those two board members won't have a clue what's going on.
That's beside the point. They're gonna be just as much of a commissioner as you are, Darrell.
I think we need to move forward.
They're voted on by the people. They're voted on by the people, not you.
I think we need to move forward in trying to obtain a new town manager.
You wanna put it in form of a motion?
I'll put it in a motion. I motion to do that.
All right, is a motion to Dar, is a second to Darrell's motion.
I'll second the motion.
What's the, is it? What, what's the, what's the motion on, on the floor here? To start with, to start the search with Ellis?
Start the search, yeah.
Can we do a motion during commissioner comment?
Yes.
So we have the motion and have a second, did you?
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Okay, there's a motion of second to Darrell's, uh, motion that we proceed in, uh, states motion again, Darrell.
Proceed in, uh, soliciting a firm to solicit applications for a new town manager. And also bringing Shannon on board, so she can come up to speed with what's going on in the town right now.
All right, you've heard the motion. All in favor? Raise, let's see a raise of hands. All opposed? Motion's denied. All right, uh, Jason, I didn't get to you, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Go ahead.
I mean, I'll, I'll echo. I've, I've told James throughout his time here that, that he's been a huge asset, and I hope that we can follow the same process and, and it, it's the most important hire that this board makes. Um, and done a great job. I hope that whoever is, you can create a momentum for somebody to take on. Uh, so thank you for that. The other thing, the Manio Business Association, I know you have a lot going on, Michelle, but, um, this has been going on a long time, um, and as we go into a workshop meeting in a couple of weeks, I think it would be appropriate to look at where we've, where we've come from, where we are, and, and what it looks like going forward. You know, whether you need more from us on this side of things, or the businesses just don't want it, or don't understand what, what, you know, um, we're doing, it, it's time to start seeing something or say, but that's, that's enough of this. Let's move on to something else, not waste resources. So, um, yeah, I'd like to see some kind of update to it, uh, in next week's meeting. But that's all I got.
Okay. Uh, we will have a meeting, uh, December the 17th. James, go, go ahead, James.
Yes, sir.
I mean, yeah, I'm.
The next meeting would be at 5:00 PM on November 17th, sir.
At 5:00?
Yes, sir.
All right, we stay in recess until, uh, November the 17th at 5:00 for a workshop.
I make a motion?
Oh, have a motion. Yeah, we have a motion adjourned, I'm sorry.
To adjourn until November 17th.
There's a second.
Second.
Motion of second to adjourn. I'm in recess. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.